Notice of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, January 3rd, 2019, beginning at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall, located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order. Next on our agenda is any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the commission. To comply with the provisions of the Opie Meeting Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item, however, the commission may direct such subjects be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Next is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner or citizen so requests, in which case the item would be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The only thing on our agenda under this section is our meeting minutes of December 6th, 2018. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. Appears to be unanimous. Next on our agenda are the action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure R 2010-09, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our first item is consideration and possible action regarding the site plan for Chick-fil-A to be located at 1757 South Friendswood Drive. Aubrey, would you please provide the staff presentation?
Yes, sir. So, this is a new commercial building to be located at 1757 South Friendswood Drive. It is, the Vergata Commons is currently under construction, which if you remember, a couple of months ago, we approved those two retail buildings, so those are underway at Leisure Lane and 518. So, this is going to be, if you're looking at those buildings to the left, there are some minor corrections that need to be on the plans. Number one is to label the zoning districts on the adjacent properties. They had clouds on there, and I think they had them on there before, but for some reason that last schedule, they left them off. So, they need to update their landscape calculations, and I think it's mainly regarding their island calculations. Maximum lighting allowed at the property line is one foot candle, and then written permission from Vergata Properties to cross the property line to tie into a private sanitary sewer line. Vergata is aware of the sewer line, and we're actually working with them to replat the property, and they can formalize that with an easement. So, other than that, the property is subject to the community overlay district requirements. They actually meet all the requirements, and they exceed the parking requirements, but they'll probably use it all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Aubrey. Is there a motion to approve with the staff's changes?
Motion approved, subject to staff's comments.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any discussion? And I'll start.
I have none at this time, though.
So, I have a question about the lighting that exceeds, is, so I didn't, I saw that the lighting exceeded, so is the, is what is on the table, is that that has to be brought into the correct requirements?
Into compliance, yeah. They can add shielding to their lighting, just to shield it to the property line, and then just give us a revised photometric plan.
So, we are not approving them with their current photometrics, right?
Right.
They have to come back into compliance?
Yes.
Okay.
But they won't be coming back to us to handle that administratively?
Right, yeah, we'll make sure that it's corrected on their final set of plans.
I should have asked previously, is there anyone here representing the applicant that would, has anything they'd like to say? Kind of skipped right over that part.
I don't think they have anybody here.
Okay. Dick, do you need to come?
Aubrey, are there any requirements regarding how much of the tract is utilized for parking and entry to parking? And in the case of Chick-fil-A, my experience is often that there's a long line going into the drive-through and stuff, and how that all works out, and how, what, I don't know, are there any city ordinances that affect that kind of planning?
As far as traffic circulation?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, we have our minimum aisle widths and, you know, our minimum parking stall sizes, but as far as traffic circulation, I kind of, I guess we kind of default that to the business owner.
Right.
I think they, you know, they have experience on what works best for their business model, so we don't really have regulations necessarily.
Right, I wouldn't have heard of any.
If we see major issues, like if an aisle is only like 12 feet wide, it can only be one way. So, I mean, we have those kind of regulations, but as far as the stacking in the drive-throughs and things like that, not really.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Question, is there going to be a sidewalk on this?
Yes, they are actually matching the landscape plan that Vergata did, so they will have that five-foot sidewalk. So, we'll have the sidewalk all the way from Jack in the Box to Leisure Lane.
I didn't see it on the drawings. Does it reflect it on the drawings?
Yes, I believe so.
On the landscape plan?
Okay.
Yeah, landscape plan.
Parking, how were the parking calculations done? I see, you see the area that looks like belongs to Chick-fil-A, and then there's a lot of parking adjacent to it. Was that included in the calculations?
Um, I don't believe so. It should just be the parking within the, on the site plan within the dotted lines.
So, that was, that's how the calculations were done, then?
Yes. The parking required for food service is eight spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area, so that would require 39 spaces, and they're providing 66.
And then, one other question, this is going off on a tangent, but you look at the detention pond back there, it looks pretty rough right now, and you recognize that, you know, they're still doing the work, but who's going to maintain that? And I think when we were talking about this, there was talk about developing it back there when they walk around it. Is that still on the works?
So, the developers of the property are the ones building the Vergata Commons. They did acquire the property from the original, Mr. Howard, the original property owner, he owned the detention pond, and they've since acquired that property from him, so it'll be in like a property owners association. So, all the, basically, all the reserves from like behind Jack in the Box and Taco Bell and all that, all the way to Leisure Lane, all those property owners would be involved in maintaining that detention pond.
So, there was talk, though, about developing it, right?
Yes.
So, what's going to drive that?
Um, the Vergata Commons developers are the primary.
Just a verbal, we're going to do that, or I'm going to do that?
It was just a verbal at the time, and I think when we did Vergata Commons, they didn't include any like improvement plans for the detention pond at that time.
My concern is, you know, I come out of, if I came out of the development right now, it looks pretty rough.
Yeah.
So, so how do we drive them to do something?
Um, so they still have two more, possibly three more tracks to develop. I think they're planning on developing the reserve where the Aldi, or the Lidl grocery store was going to go. So, I really, I mean, I really think they'll improve that detention pond just because it's going to improve their property. It's, I mean, they're, they're going to have outdoor sitting areas with the restaurants that are going in one of those strip centers, so, I mean, they're going to want it to be aesthetically pleasing. I don't think they're going to end up doing the sidewalk all the way around the detention pond like they had originally planned. I think they're going to do it just along the one side, closest to their buildings, but like I said, I think it's going to be in their best interest to improve it, but on the future site plans, when they do that other rear tract.
So, will we see that?
Yes, yeah, that would come to y'all.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Their, their plans show use of the detention pond for requirements?
Um, no, it, I mean, it's not required, but.
They don't need it for this track, is that what you're saying?
The detention pond, it is detention for this track.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But that's been previously seen by this, by the commission and approved, correct?
The, yes, when we, when we platted the property, they accounted for that detention at that time. Now, the easements to get the water from all these tracks to that property were included on the plat. Now, when they develop these tracks, they'll install the storm sewers that get the water to the channels that get the water to that, or, yeah, to get the water to those ponds.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor. Looks to be unanimous. Okay, next item is consideration and possible action regarding the preliminary plat of Robertson State, 12.15 acres out of tracks A and B of Division of Lot 3 and 4, Block J, Central Park subdivision. Aubrey, could you provide any background on that?
Yes, sir. So, this is a 12-acre piece of property that's going to be used for a single-family residence. I know there's been some question why we were requiring a plat for such a big track just for a single-family home. The, our planning exemption, to qualify for that, your property has to be five acres or less with adequate utilities and street frontage. So, with them being 12 acres, they don't qualify for the exemption, so that's the reason why you have the plat before you. There are some minor corrections on theirs as well, it's just labeling. As far as design and layout, they're good, we just need to clarify. There's a 10-foot strip along the west property line. I think one and two are kind of tied together. There's a private sanitary sewer easement that's called out on the utility plan but not labeled on the plat. That 10-foot strip, I think, is that easement, so it just needs to be labeled correctly. There's a 10, let's see, there's a public water line easement that's just labeled as a UE. Typically, a UE is dry utilities, so we need to clarify that that's a public water line easement. The water service and meter and fire hydrant must be located within a public water line easement, and then add recording information or to be recorded with separate instrument to Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District easement and right-of-way, and then relocate the rear property line to account for a 20-foot right-of-way to the drainage district.
So, would we, I assume, approve this or vote on this based on the, making those exceptions, those changes?
Yes, yeah, and then when they, they'll resubmit a paper copy, we'll ensure that they're, those changes are made before the plat is recorded. Actually, this is a preliminary plat, so you'll see this one again. We'll make sure all these corrections are on the final plat.
But we need to go ahead and vote to approve it as a preliminary plat?
Yeah.
Do you want to take comments?
It'd be great. Is anybody here representing the property owner, any comments you'd like to make? If you could step to the podium if you have any.
Oh, come on, we don't bite. We really.
I wanted to, having our family here for many, 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 many more years on this tract of land for our children, so looking forward to it. Can't wait for this to get through.
Thank you, thank you. So, with that, is there a motion to approve with staff's changes, recommended changes?
Motion approved with changes.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
I have a comment.
I'm sorry.
I don't have any discussion.
Great, great. Always have to have two.
I just had one quick question. Everything that you had talked about, Aubrey sounded like it was just cleaning up the drawings and making sure that they're reflected right. The one that was a little confusing to me was the water service meter and fire hydrant must be located within a public water line easement. Does that mean it has to be moved? The fire hydrant has to be moved, or?
No, I think there, there is already a water line on the property. We're formal, that was put, this water line was put in back in the 60s or 70s by a, another developer, and nothing ever developed.
Right.
So, there's a water line out there, so we're formalizing the public water line easement, and then these property owners are actually extending the water line and looping it back to Wilderness Trail to help with water pressure and water quality. So, I think they just, on their drawing, showed the meter outside that easement, and it just needs to be, it hasn't been installed yet, it just needs to be.
The meter will be installed inside the property.
In the easement.
It'll go to the right place. Is this also granting an easement for that, that water line?
Yes.
So, then it becomes public, right?
Yes, yes, and then once, once that water line is installed, the city will take over maintenance of that water line.
Thank you.
So, on the plat, the, for the flood statement, and I don't know if I'm reading this right or not, but it's located in Zone X of the floodway to, for the 500-year flood plan as of September 22nd, 1999. That is not our latest flood maps, right? So, in that, out of date for flood, flood plain information?
That is, yeah, we adopted the 2017.
Right.
Flood maps this past year.
So, this is not compliant with the flood?
Okay, we'll have a.
Can you show you where that is?
Is it numbered on there? It's so tiny on my press.
Very first one, under flood statement, on the left.
Oh, I see it, okay, yeah, we can have them update that.
So, just with, with our recent flooding issues.
No, I can explain that.
Something that we want to catch.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else?
I'm good, that's it.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion, is there a motion to approve with staff's comment and the, I guess the addition?
I'll amend my motion to include that change.
I'll amend my second to match that.
Perfect, perfect. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor. Appears to be unanimous. Okay. The next item is consideration and possible action regarding the preliminary plat of Industry Park, Friendswood, 7.9874 acres out of Lot 64, Division D, Foydell Kaufman Edition. Aubrey, could you provide background on this question?
Sir, this developer is proposing to subdivide its approximately eight acres into seven commercial reserves. Actually, the property is zoned industrial. It is located out off of 2351, near Timber Creek Golf Course. This is a preliminary plat, so you will see this one again without all the contours on there. They are accessing the property with a private access easement from 2351, and then the, the road to all the properties is going to be a private access as well. So, the property owner will maintain the street and everything, it won't be dedicated to the city. And we are working with them, we have a water plant back there, so we're working with them. They're actually improving the road access to our water plant.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. Is there anybody here from the applicants that would like to, oh, please, please step up to the podium and give us your name, please?
I'm Stephanie Kennedy, I'm with Coastal Bend Property Development. I'm sure you all know Dan Rucker is the owner of the tract. Yeah, we're just looking forward to bringing some new business into town, some new tax revenue. We actually already have one business that's excited about relocating to Friendswood. They don't want to be named at this time, but they are a wholesaler, so if y'all have any questions, feel free to ask.
I've forgotten the order of, well, we have to have a, we've got a motion, so who, do, do, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, Joe.
Is this, is this the, the same road that accesses the golf course?
No, it's a separate road.
Okay. I'm talking about the access road for these properties.
Right, it's a separate driveway. It's actually goes right now to this, the city's existing water treatment plant, which will be widened and improved, so it's not gravel anymore, it'll be concrete.
Okay, thank you. So, I took a drive-by today and rode into the golf course. I assumed that it was the last lot on the right as you're going into the golf course. Is that an offset?
If you drive up where Hope Village turn, goes into the, the golf club, there's, you can see off to your right the water plant.
Yep.
The track's actually on that side, so you can't actually, you can't access it from Hope Village at all.
Okay, so you're back away from the, the road from Timber Creek, Timber Creek Golf Course. So, I had the wrong spot altogether.
I did, too.
Confused I was, okay? No, I have no questions.
So, this one also references the 1999 flood.
I believe we actually had put both on it, both the old and the new, because they didn't change from one year to the next.
What I see on here is on number fif, on item 15, not sure how to, is that it lies, it's referencing the September 22nd, 1999. I didn't see any reference to the 2017.
Then we, we can add that on there, but they are the same, they didn't change from one to the other.
So, FEMA still recognizes the 99 maps. The city adopted its 2017 maps, so the 99 is still the effective map for FEMA, so it's not that that map is not good. So, some of the, the plats and stuff and site plans, we've been referencing both, so.
If I were building, I would want to build so that I wasn't flooded.
Yes, and this is the Harris County side, so.
Right.
Even the Galveston County and Harris County maps are different with FEMA, so.
Yeah, we did reference the City of Friendswood's maps because that's what they are using right now, but we can add all the maps that are referenced, because it actually also references the Harris County 2017 maps as well. But they all actually show this is outside the 500-year flood plan in 2019.
Okay.
From satellite images, it looks like it's heavily wooded, so we wouldn't discuss any type of tree, what's the tree fund, what's it called?
Tree mitigation.
Yeah, we wouldn't talk about any of that until an actual.
Site plan.
Right, change.
Yeah.
And when we did clear the property, we did save a few trees, you see out there that were the larger diameter ones, we're hoping to make sure they stay alive.
Okay. What's it planning?
We hope to have our first building up before the end of the year.
2019?
Yes.
Okay. But you won't tell us what it is.
I'm not at liberty to say, but someone else may be.
Any other, any questions or comments?
So, potentially seven different small industry or.
Correct.
Light industrial type facilities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Looks to be unanimous.
The road, yeah.
Good. Okay, so, next up is a presentation, Downtown Improvement Plan by Mr. Ron Cox, on behalf of the Friendswood Downtown Economic Development Corporation.
Can I do a quick little introduction wise?
Yes, please.
So, this was, this is a presentation by FDEDC. This is a presentation of a plan that was put together for public property. It's just informational for the commission, there's no decisions or anything that need to be made by the commission, it's just informational so that you know what this other committee is doing in the downtown district.
So, Mr. Chair and, and Commission, thank you for Aubrey inviting me. Thanks, thanks to Aubrey for inviting me. You should have received, let me, let me back up just a little bit. I'm on the FDEDC Corporation Board, Paul Marks is here as well, and I asked Paul to come in case you guys drill down into something more detailed that I can't answer, and he's got all the answers, he knows, he knows what, what that is. We've been, as you know, the, the corporation was established, the sales tax has been, been now collected for, this will be starting our, into our second year, actually our, actually our third, I believe. At any rate, we're collecting sales tax. Question was, what do we do with it when we get it? And we finally came to the conclusion that we needed a plan, that's what you guys would have told us immediately because you're planners. And, and so, we engaged Lauren Griffith and Associates to create the Downtown District Improvement Plan, DDIP. We don't ever want to leave out the middle D and call it a dip, we'll just call it the Downtown Plan. It's about 115 pages long, so if you'll just turn to page one, I'll begin. I don't know why you laugh. I have tried to hone down those 115 pages into something that, that I think we could talk about. But basically, we, we, the team that Lauren Griffith put together was, she's a landscape architect, she engaged on her team, lighting consultants, branding consultants, and, and transportation consultants, traffic consultants. So, the four together created this plan with the help of, of the community, quite frankly. And then I, and ultimately, what we wanted was for it to identify specific projects that these funds could be used for that would be used in a cohesive manner according to a plan, but that we could move forward with in some way. And so, so that, this project has in fact done that, this plan has in fact done that. What we don't want to do is move with too much haste, even in the, even through this process. Number one, we don't have the money annually to fund this plan and any part of this plan, and we have applied for a transportation improvement grant that I'll talk about in just a little bit, that will expand the use of these funds considerably, if funded. But we, but what, what we want to do is to make a positive impact on the community and particularly the downtown community, and, and so, with that, I wanted to just sort of outline what, what we have in the plan. We have what the goals and objectives were, and I'll, I'll talk about those in just a little, little bit. They did a rather extensive assessment, and that assessment consisted of a, of a survey that many of you, that all of you should have had access to and received, and we received over a thousand, right at a thousand responses to that online survey, which in their estimation and in mine, was a significant response for, for this kind of project. They also did stakeholder meetings, that we identified in the downtown community a number of different stakeholders, business owners, residents, the churches, organizations such as, such as the Masons, other, other kinds of organizations there, and we put them in groups and had stakeholder groups, including school kids. And of that, of that audience, we had about 200 participants. We then had public meetings. There were three public meetings, they weren't as well attended, they were held here, we had charrettes out in the hallway, and people could come and go with a short presentation that, that Ms. Griffin made. We had about 50 participants in those. So, all total, we had almost 1,300 people participate in the development of the, of this plan in one way or another, and we were very, very. in the development of the, of this plan in one way or another, and we were very, very pleased, very pleased with that. And out of all of that participation then came, came these recommendations and came these specific projects. This is a rendition of the process that they took, that they took place. Part of, part of it included a site inventory to take a look at what we have on the ground and where it is on the ground, what the zoning is. They looked at regulatory documents, the subdivision ordinance, the overlay ordinance, district ordinance, and those kinds of things to make sure what we had to work within, and then whether or not there needed to be some recommendations for change in order to make the best of what we were about to do. And then, of course, you see the stockholder, the stakeholder meetings, the public meetings, progress as we went down. Ultimately, this, this was reviewed extensively by the board, recommended to the City Council for approval, and in October of eighteen, just this last year, I can now say last year, they unanimously approved that. And so our goal now, or our process now, is to begin the implementation of that. But before I, before I get to that, let me just talk about the district goals and the objectives. Well, again, what we want is to foster this economic development within this community for the residents, so that residents can come and go, they can interact, they can visit, to keep people from, not keep people, but encourage people to stay in town, to do things in the, in the city, in the downtown area, and to make that as conducive to family environment as we can. And you can see some of these other things, attract businesses. If we, we believe that if we create the right environment, then it's going to be an opportunity for people, businesses to come and flourish. Not just come and go, but come and flourish and remain for many years. And so our goal is to create that environment for them to be able to do that. We're, we're not recruiters. We are, we are charged with spending this, this sales tax money in such a way that it creates that proper environment for the downtown area. We want it to be safe, walkable, usable. We want it, we want to be able to intermingle the, the traffic that's, that we see running up and down five eighteen with the pedestrian environment that we want to create. And that's going to take some, some changes and some alterations to the existing system, not to the highways, but, but to, but for pedestrians. Make it bikeable. Provide, or identify what open space we have, look at what parking needs we may have, those kinds of things, and, and work within that. So I think Lauren did, and her team did a great job of taking those goals and objectives, keeping them in mind as, as they move through this process. So you've probably seen this map before. This is a map of the district, and it shows the current zoning within that. The district is fixed. I think Mary Kay, as your city attorney, will, will say that it's fixed. She's told us it's fixed. Projects can, projects can go on outside of that district, but city, but the four B sales tax, the type B sales tax cannot be used outside of these boundaries. The only way to expand those boundaries would be to go back for a vote of the people to change that district boundary. So we're glad to work within that district. It's been fixed for a long time. There's an overlay district associated with that. There's a lot of work that's been done. There was a downtown plan that was done fifteen years ago, maybe a little bit more than that. And, and so this is all related to that same area. Parking, I don't have all of, all of these maps up, but I wanted to talk about this one particularly, because I think it's kind of interesting. Everybody says we just need more places to park. And, and if you look at that map, you'll see all the blue interspersed all in and out of that district. Those are all parking spaces throughout the entire district. And so the conclusion was that there's plenty of parking available. It's just not available to everybody at the same time. And it may take a little bit of time, but there's, a recommendation here is to work with the existing property owners to, to allow public to use that under certain conditions and during certain times. Some of those are church parking lots, for example. Well, they're, they're, they're full on Sunday, I hope, but they're not necessarily full on Saturday or Monday. And so how do you, how do you make that fit? And, and so this was a, this was a kind of an eye-opener for me personally, and I, I was very interested to see this, and I think there's some opportunity there that's not, that's not going to cost us anything. It's gonna, it's by agreement to be able to do that. The issue of sidewalks and walkability is a, is a big deal for our, for this district. It's a big deal for people in general, as you, as you know. One of your former planning, planning zoning commission members said, "I would love for, to be able to walk from my house all the way downtown and have, have a meal and walk back with my grandchildren," he said, "and I can't do that now." So, and, and, and that's, that's exactly right. It's better now, and there are ways to get there now. But it needs to be improved, and we can affect it within the boundaries of that district, but we can't take it, we can't take it outside of that. But if we can form up with a plan that the city may have, that you all may work on sometime, then we can make that happen, and we can make that happen as well with, with, not only with walking, but with bicycles, to, to create that environment in a larger community, and then make improvements as the best the corporation can within the district. This particular one shows where some of the sidewalks don't exist, where they are too narrow for, for usage. When I worked for the city many years ago, we had a goal to have a sidewalk on, on at least one side of the road from, for the full length of this district, from twenty-eight, twenty-three fifty-one all the way to the creek. And so the narrow sidewalks that you see are those that were put in at the time. But even that wasn't completed, for, for whatever reason. We, we got pretty far down the road. Well, those sidewalks were the standard at the time. How wide were they, Brett, at the standard?
Four?
Four feet.
Four feet, I think, yeah. So now they, they, they need to be five. Some people say they even need to be eight. And so what those standards are then, they've changed over time, and that needs to be redone, expanded, and, and, and moved beyond five eighteen to either side of five eighteen within the district over a period of time. So that's a, quite, quite an ambitious project. Here's just an example of what some of those now look like, and you, you all have, have good memory of what that is as well. Bicycle circulation is the same way, and I've talked about that just a little bit. There are mobility recommendations that include sidewalks, bicycles, traffic management, as well as curb ramps, getting those standardized and useful for all, as opposed to stopping, as you see on one photo, stopping at, on, at grass or dirt on an unproved area, and making sure that the ramps that we have meet those new ADA requirements. So there's opportunity there to make this, from a mobility perspective, make it a lot better in the community. One of the things that's been talked about a lot are mast arms at the intersections. Most of the intersections in the downtown area have the power lines going across, and they're hanging off the cable, swinging in the wind, particularly on a day like today. So redoing all of those to, to a mast arm, like is in the picture in the upper right-hand, and even an ornamental mast arm, which is more than just bare galvanized, is expensive. We were just having a debate a few minutes ago about how expensive that is. It's either two hundred and fifty thousand per intersection, or probably more accurately, two hundred and fifty thousand per mast arm, which would be four of those. So you're talking about a million dollars in intersection as you go down through this, this process. But look at the difference that it makes in the, in the lookability, if you will, and the usefulness, the perception of the community. You go down Highway Six through Sugar Land, and every one of those are those upgraded mast arms. We have about three of them in our community right now, I think. Maybe, maybe just two, but one at, one on five eighteen and one on, at Blackhawk on twenty-three fifty-one. They make a big difference, and so those are, those are projects that, examples of projects that have been identified. And then finally, crosswalks. Crosswalks and pedestrian signals. So there, there may be a need for crosswalks at non-intersection locations, where you could have a pedestrian cross at someplace. And that may, that may, may or may not be true, but there may be some places where we can encourage people to park across the road and, and come over to, back and forth, depending on what their needs are and business ideas are. Lighting has been, is, is a big, is a big issue. Paul is the expert on lighting. He works for CenterPoint. He really is the expert on lighting. He's not just a guy on our committee that happens to be able to plug a, a plug in somewhere. So this is, this is beyond me, but there are recommendations in the plan with regard to the lighting standards. And that, that means light emission, as well as the standard on which the light stands. There are some specifications associated with that that are missing, and quite frankly, Paul is working on those to be able to come back with a recommendation. There, there may be a place where the board comes back to the, to the planning commission with some recommendations on some lighting standard changes. And then we have other decisions to make. The board may say, you know, we think it's better if, if the board purchases the lights in order to ensure consistency and continuity, where you can't require a standard of light. You can require a lumen, you can require what it may be height, but you can't say, "This is the one we want you to buy." The board may decide to do that. I don't know that they will, but we've had that discussion recently. So lighting is a, I think, a key, key thing, key decision point for the board as we move forward. Once we make those decisions with the help of people like Paul, we can, we can then make stair-step decisions on what to buy, when to buy, how to buy, where to locate, those kinds of things as we, as we move forward. This is an example of some of the lighting standards that they have recommended, lighting recommendations. And even in the, even in the body of this, they talk about what type of light and what lumen range that they would recommend as well. So out of this came a lot of projects and opportunities. I want to talk a little bit about the projects. I'm not going to talk about the opportunities, because that would be another sixty pages on the document. It may be a little bit too much time for you. The, the plan itself divides the, the projects into projects A through F or G. I'm not sure how many of those there are. And, and Project A is a key project, because it, it helps to not only define the area to work in, but the projects to work on. And Project A is what's called the heart of downtown, the heart of the downtown district, which is basically Spreading Oaks and, and five eighteen, where the, where the Friends Church is, the library is, and then spreading out from there. So that's the heart. And Project A really centers, you can see that dotted line, around the two-block area around the heart. And, and that is an area that we, we're not only focused on from a big picture, but we're focused on to try to make an impact early in order to show good, positive use of the funds in a productive way. Those, those projects include putting the sidewalks in, brick sidewalks, like, like the sidewalks that are now being put in, lighting in that area, the pedestrian improvements, maintaining those historic live oaks, keeping those things alive, obviously not encroaching on them, but also using them with perhaps even lighting in the trees, to light those and create that ambiance that's needed for evening-type of social functions, intersection improvements, the mast arms, other kinds of things, bearing utility lines. I haven't mentioned that, but your, your member, Mr. Sasson, went on a one-man charge. Not one man. Who helped you on that? Three, three-person charge on that to, to get some of these lines removed. The power lines that belong to TNMP are beyond our financial capacity to remove. But the AT&amp;T lines, some were, some were in use, most were not. And so what you now see is, up and down the street, is what you don't see. They've actually been removed. There's many AT&amp;T poles and lines as we possibly could. The ones that are going across the street now sort of mid-block onto a wooden pole are generally electric power lines, and so they're used in some way. So they're not, they're not owned or operated by AT&amp;T. That was almost a hundred thousand dollars. So, so AT&amp;T owns the lines, they used them up, some of them they weren't using anymore. They required the city to pay them to remove them. That makes a lot of sense, but that's, that's what happens in, in this environment. And so fortunately, the board and the council approved those expenditures to be able to do that. Gateway signage, I didn't mention that earlier. So we talked about branding, along with that branding, and underlying that branding is gateway signage. What is it, how do you identify when you're coming into downtown, and what standard are you going to use to do that? You're going to put up a four-bait sheet of plywood? Or are you going to build a sign that's acceptable and meets a standard that you're, that you're wanting to develop? And so they've made recommendations on where those, where those, what those gateway signs can look like, and where they can be, and those kinds of things as we move through this process. Project B deals with those branding elements, intersection improvements, and, and again, burying those utility lines. Streetscape enhancements are Project C, which would include street furniture, banners, other kinds of amenities that, and then again, the sidewalks and the things that we've already talked about. Cycling routes have been, are, are beginning to develop throughout the area. So there's a, there's a plan for Project D to identify those. Project E to improve these intersections at Spreading Oaks, Shadow Bend, and Clearview, where we now, where we currently have traffic signals. Not, not only with the mast arms, but just make them easier to cross, fix them, fix the crosswalks, do other kinds of things to help that pedestrian flow as we, as we move through that. There's some opportunity around the old activity, around the current activity center, the old city hall area. There's a large area of city-owned property there. Maybe, maybe make that available for social gatherings, other kinds of uses, depending on the size of the gathering that, that may be coming. But create an area where you can have groups come together and feel comfortable there, feel safe there, take out some old slabs, do some landscaping and other kinds of things, make them useful. Another area next to Stevenson Park has that as well. This is an example of what the street signs and banners might look like as they've come forward. This is the branding. For those of you who are Aggies, we apologize. For those of you who are, who are UT fans, we, we got it close but not quite right, I think. The burnt orange, this is not burnt orange. So, so this took, this took almost as much discussion as the, as the lighting did. Is this a, you know, is it, is it, is it the right thing for Friendswood? What we finally agreed to, and I was one of the guys that took a little bit of, the board members took a little bit of time to warm up to it, quite frankly. Others grabbed hold of it fairly quickly. It is something that does in fact get your attention. It does brand the location, and it is identifiable. And that's what we wanted, and they, they spent a lot of time. If you look at the, underneath the downtown, you'll see an acorn. That acorn is a throwback to the oak trees, so this is the beginning, the new beginning, and this is where friends meet. And that's the slogan that we came up with for that area. You'll begin to see this over time as this takes hold and as it, as we, as we do the banners, as we do. banners, as we do the signage, as we do the gateways, you'll begin to see this as we go through. This is the budget. This is where, you know, all the wonderful things come together into a dollar amount that you can't afford. But, but this is the budget. You'll see project A has a $2 million budget. Project B has a $1.3 million budget. So what we, and I'm not going to go through all of these budgeted items, but we've done two things with this. And then I'm, then I promise I'm going to wrap it up. We've done two things with this. One is the, the council, with the board's recommendation, hired a grant consultant to put together a grant package for a transportation improvement plan, project, transportation improvement project that would be funded by TaxDOT. It's a 70/30 opportunity. We put together a $5.2 million application. Thirty percent of that is about, along with, along with contingencies, is about $2.1 million. Now, if we had to come up with the $2.1 today, we're not going to make it. We only have about a little less than a million in the bank. But, but these projects take about five years to mature. So by the time, if we get funded, by the time they're ready for their money and we're ready to do this project, we should have our share available for that project. And what we did was we maximized the, the use of the, of the TaxDOT money for the improvements along 518, the mast arms, the sidewalks, the lighting that we can, that we can get in there. Any, the, the ADA, the crosswalks, all of those kinds of things were included in that grant application. And that application has been submitted, but it has not yet been funded. We, we know, it, the decision has not been made. Even if it does get made, it'll be a while before it comes to fruition. The one disadvantage to that is that TaxDOT is, is in control. And the, the Keep Friendswood Beautiful folks have kind of suffered through that with the landscaping on the medians because TaxDOT was in control. But it's TaxDOT's money. And so they do the contracts, they do all that work at their own pace. So once that gets started, we'll have to monitor that as much as, as we can, but, but we still want to do it. The second thing we've done is we've taken a look at all of these projects and said, okay, if we're having to wait for five years for this to be done, what can we do now? And we spent our last board meeting looking at all of these projects, saying, okay, what's not in the tip grant that we can afford to do as, over these next five years? And we identified projects that we can do. We can do the street lighting that Paul's working on, the standards and the, the lights themselves. We can do, we can do the, the, the lighting of the trees. We can do the branding. We can do a, a number of, of other things that, that have slipped my mind now, but we, we came up with about a, almost a half a million dollars worth of projects. Can't do all those in one time, and we don't want to do that beyond our ability to save that money for the, for the matching amount. But we did come up with projects. Those are unapproved right now. The council, I mean, the board has not settled in on those, but we spent a lot of time doing that last time. So we're, we, we've kind of moved out of the, we, we, our first role as a corporation, as a board, was to get our organization established. Once we got that organizational structure established, then we began to look at what are, what, what do we need to do? How do we go about doing that? And thus the plan. And now we're moving into that implementation plan phase where we can actually see a little bit of that money used for projects that we might want to do in the future. And so Jeff promised me that when I got to that, that was the last slide. And Paul will be glad to answer any questions he has. I hope that was helpful. I, I, I didn't know exactly what you wanted, and so rather than give you a two-hour speech, maybe it was just 20 minutes or 30, I don't know. But it's pretty, pretty short for me, quite frankly. We'd be glad to answer questions.
Thank you.
That was great. Thank you. Any, any questions?
Yeah, I've, I've got a couple if you want to start down here.
Please.
So I'm sure you guys have looked at a lot of this, so I'm thinking the answers are probably right on the tip of your tongue. What percentage of the downtown district is already developed? Whereas, I mean, because there, there's opportunity there, right? So you're probably looking at that to offset some costs as well. I mean, we don't do anything in a year around here. And here we are with Vision 2020. I mean, that's out of date now. I mean, so how relevant was that Vision 2020? Did you pull any resources? Did you, did you tap into that, that study?
Vision, Vision 2020 was a kind of a larger, larger dynamic, certainly relevant. But, but for us, it was about the downtown district. So we didn't, we didn't discard it by any means, nor did we discard the downtown plan that was done about 15 years ago. But these were, but what we didn't want was a, a, we didn't want a vision, a new visionary plan. We wanted a, a series of projects that would meet the vision, if you will. So we understood what the vision is. We sort of created our own for the downtown itself, and we have a vision and a mission for our own, for the corporation. But, but we did not ignore those plans.
Yeah, but I believe in there, there were some target markets, which some of those target markets would fit in the downtown district. So if there are things that we can do to help facilitate bringing those businesses here earlier, it'd all be good things to do.
I agree.
Especially considering, and if anyone remembers, about three years ago, we had a citizen survey they came and presented, and I think number one on that list was a diversi, diversification of the tax base closer to that 80/20 goal.
Right, right.
I don't know how we get anywhere close to that without doing things that you're talking about. So what I worry about, and then you didn't have anything in there about a schedule, which I understand why you don't have that. Just looking at the numbers, if you're looking at eight or nine million worth of projects, you know, there's a lot to do. But there are things like the temperature controls and the lighting things that maybe we can look at. So have you thought about making any recommendations for us to consider?
We have. We have thought about making those recommendations, but we're not quite to the point of making the recommendations yet. So, you know, we just, this is hot off the presses, I suppose. We've, we've kind of worked our way through the holidays now. But, but I think there will be, I think we will come back with some proposed policy changes and other kinds of things that you guys can wrap your arms around as well. I don't think there's a lot of, of policy changes to make. There may be some in these, these lighting standards or maybe some, some of those kinds of things.
The color palettes you mentioned, those are all easy things to change.
Sure.
And the sooner we do it, the sooner we get there.
Right. And, and so we, so we, we have projects, but we also realize there are policies that need to be adjusted from time to time. And getting to the 80/20 has been a, been, been a long-time goal. And, and we're, you know, we're losing opportunity, obviously, every day.
Right. Thanks.
Marcus, let me go ahead and say, those are great points that we've been meeting on. So you're kind of, you know, a little ahead of our agenda items, but later on, I'll talk a little bit about our downtown district subcommittee, that exactly some of those things we've been meeting on.
Oh, right. Of course.
No, 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 but so those are exactly the kind of things, so good points.
I, I should have mentioned that myself. I'd forgotten that, that, that committee's, subcommittee's working.
I think, I think between council, planning and zoning, and your group, they've always been working together, but we've been trying over the last weeks and, and months to really try to expand that and make it work closer together. So I, I think that'll bear fruit.
All right. I would like to comment that, that the changes to the downtown district, just the small ones that I've seen, have certainly improved that, the aspect of, of Friendswood. I, I've been here quite a while and I, it has changed tremendously, and it has always bothered me that Friendswood has a ugly downtown. That has always been something that has bothered me. But the changes that have been, that have gone on in the last five, six years have been tremendous, even in the small things that they've done. And even in, in working in front of city hall last spring for days on end, I saw a lot more people using those wide brick sidewalks. It was all day long, bikers, children. So for me, you have my full support, and I think it, it does a lot for bringing friends together and making it a place where friends meet. So, so I'm totally behind this.
Amen.
Yeah.
So, so there's, there's the, the project aspect of it that, that we're trying to enhance. There's also the social aspect of it.
Right.
And that's what the Friends of Downtown Friendswood Association's all about. FDA is all about the social aspects of that. The, the murals, I didn't realize the second mural was under construction now, but, but it is. And, until Sally told me tonight. And, and so it, it's a concerted effort, and I think it is beginning to, to be noticed. Do you know, have, have, any of you been to, to downtown Sugar Land? No.
Not recently.
Not recently. I'm talking about the original downtown Sugar Land by the, by the old Sugar Plant.
By the Sugar Factory?
Yeah. It doesn't exist. Okay, so we've got two choices. We can either leave it like it is and it goes away. Sugar Land made a decision just to move. They just built their own. Or we can enhance what we have. And I think this is an effort, I know this is an effort to, to do that. So to, to main, to, to build what we have and make it something that's presentable and enjoyable.
Ron, thanks for coming. Appreciate you keeping it brief in, in Ron Cox time.
Yeah.
This is really good. We're trying to make sure that we don't do something that's at cross purposes to what you're doing and kind, and vice versa. And I think these kind of discussions help everybody. One thing I wanted to kind of put that in, in the little gray cells to be working on or one of the things to have on your agenda is ways of, we just spent almost $200,000 to bury lines, as you know. It's a lot more expensive to get rid of them than to avoid putting them up. But there are places where people will be putting new ones up crossing 518 because the power lines are all on the east side and the development's oftentimes going in on the west side. And, and sometimes the nearest access is from the other side. And X-Numax just does the cheapest option. And so we need to look at alternatives. I know Sally has done this in the past of, of trying to identify something that might be only a little more expensive, and maybe we chip in some money, or I, I don't know what we do, but ways of avoiding new power lines going in that eventually will cost 10 times as much to, to, to mitigate than, than, on these new establishments. So we need to kind of keep an eye on it. We, we talked a little bit offline about some way of, anytime something new is going across 518, we stop and think about it a little bit and, and just make sure we identify those things and, 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 you know, make sure that really is the, the best way to go about it. And so I, I would, I would kind of put that on one of your other items to, to be included in what you're thinking about on these, on these new developments. But bravo to all the good stuff you guys are doing. Appreciate it. And again, appreciate the talk. Having Paul at our downtown district meetings has been really helpful, and, and like I said, it helps us move together.
I just want to say kudos to you and the EDC board. You all have done a phenomenal job since day one. I mean, you've done it right. You took your time, you planned, you everything. It's all coming together. It's so exciting. And, and people might know this, this is the first downtown plan in over 20-something years that actually has a funding source. There's, there's money behind this plan. So that's, that's very encouraging. And I'm so glad to hear that you're going to start in the heart of downtown and try to get some projects off quickly while you're trying to build the money. Perfect plan. You're all doing great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot for coming and a great presentation. Just one question. Have you thought about any way that people can actually volunteer to help with some of these projects?
Well, you can just insert yourself like Richard did. I'm just teasing. I appreciate everything he's done, quite frankly.
I'm actually talking about some of the labor or some of the work. I mean, I think a lot of people would be interested in, in just helping with something.
Most of what we're going to do is, is going to be contract-based.
Does it have to be?
It'd be, it'd be a function of managing that if it wasn't. So I'm not sure who's, who's, who's going to be able to manage that. We do have a contract with the city for administration, and that contract could be altered in some way so that the corporation pays those costs. So what I would recommend is the volunteer work going back toward the downtown, Friends of Downtown Friendswood. That's where they need all the volunteers they can get.
And Keep Friendswood Beautiful.
And Keep Friendswood Beautiful. Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're more the doers. We're just, we just got the money in the pocket.
Thanks, Ron. I really enjoyed the comments and the presentation. It's, it's great to see plans that can actually be massaged into decisions at some point. That's wonderful. I do have one, one suggestion, one comment. The suggestion is, in this, like, like in Richard's case, it's kind of personal. I, I think he didn't like walking underneath all those wires, but. I, I would love to bike to downtown Friendswood, but I'm taking my life in my hands. Getting out on 528.
Yeah, me too.
And it's just not workable. I mean, as, as much as I'd like the, the biking stuff and, and walking stuff within the downtown district, you got to get there. And, and for me, a bike would be a great option. I'd love to do it, but I can't.
Yeah, me too. I, I live on the south end of the city, and for me to ride all the way up here, it'd be a great ride and good exercise, but.
Assuming you survive.
Yeah. You know, I saw, I saw a bike going across 518 and 528 tonight, and I thought, he's going to get run over before he gets wherever he's going. So a bike master plan, a bike, a bike route master plan, sidewalk master plan, those kinds of things out of, through the parks program, Parks and Recreation Program might be something that the city would consider, and then we can fill in the blanks downtown.
Right. Understand. And I guess the, just as a suggestion, I have had occasion for business purposes to be up in Grapevine, and I find their downtown area has got a lot of these very same elements as a good example, I think.
That, that is a good example. And there are a lot of them out there that you can choose from. There are a lot of type B corporations in the state of Texas, just like ours. There aren't any that have been just focused on a specific geographic area except us. And so we've got an opportunity to kind of plow new ground, if you will.
Thanks. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Thank you for your patience, Ms. Wood. Sometimes you get what you ask for.
No, it's obvious you care about it very deeply and, and have been involved, so thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Our next item is consideration and possible amendments to Appendix C zoning ordinances, section, section eight, supplementary district regulations to add landscaping requirements and dumpster screening requirements. Aubrey, are you going to go over that or is that?
So we have been working on recertifying the city for scenic city, and a lot of their requirements were kind of what we consider low-hanging fruit. By adding some of these into our zoning ordinance, we can increase our ranking significantly. Right now, we are a bronze level certification. There's also silver, gold, platinum. So we definitely were shooting to be able to get to silver. I think based on the preliminary numbers, we can actually get to gold, which is a pretty big jump. Couple of additions that we would be suggesting and bringing to council for ordinance changes. The subcommittee's gone over these quite a bit, and the majority of them are going to be in our landscaping section. It's just kind of tightening things up.
So just a quick question on that, on the scenic city thing, can that help with grants? I mean, if, if we say that we are a scenic city, can that like move us up in a?
I don't know specifically if it would help with grants, but it is a, it is a bragging right. It does, you know, it's, it's an extra badge for the city. It's something that we can, we have signs at the entrances and it, it can't hurt.
Yeah, it can't, can't hurt. Maybe that's something to keep in mind when we apply.
Yeah, maybe attract.
That might move us up and.
Yes. Any, any credentials we have when different boards or committees apply for grants, definitely, you know, they get used and added to the applications. Most of these are scenic city changes. There are a couple of staff changes, things that we make note of as we come across them that either clerically need to be fixed or just in practice need to be fixed. So the first change in our zoning ordinance would be that we specify all required trees for landscaping have to be a certain size. The way that it's worded right now, it's kind of misleading, so that was just a cleanup item. Our minimum tree size is two-inch caliper, eight feet tall, and so this just tightens that up. The next two are scenic city. Which, and I'll just cut it short. Islands have to have curbs, which that's something that we do anyway. So putting it in writing, that gives us three extra points. But also islands, you cannot obstruct visibility. So common sense item, and that's another five points. That lets them use taller bushes in the middle and then shorter ground cover on the end. So vehicles and pedestrians can still see around them. We've also got, if you're going to use pavement around trees, it has to be porous and, you know, earth friendly basically materials. You have to irrigate your plants. I mean, these are both things that it's not hurting the city any to adopt these. Even the irrigation requirement, we're not being very strict. We're saying you have to have proper irrigation. So whether that be the business owner out there with a garden hose or paying to have a full blown irrigation system installed, that is up to them. But we just want it in writing that says you have to water your plants. And that gets us another three points, two points. We have a three extra for protection of trees during construction. We do that in practice now, but we really don't have anything very strong on the books about how to protect the trees during construction. So the next two items, D, two, three, and four, are saying you have to have barricades. You have to have them up during construction. You can't take them down until you're done. You can't park vehicles or equipment in a protected root zone. The next one is a staff change. The current ordinance says the property owner has to maintain trees in healthy condition for a follow-up period. And when we stopped and thought about it, we didn't understand why there was a follow-up period. Basically, if you plant the trees, you have to keep them. You don't just have to keep them for a year or two, you have to keep them. So we took out the wording for a follow-up period. And there's a couple of different places that will remove that term. Section 3C, we're adding a clause that says it is prohibited to cut trees or clear vegetation on public rights of way to provide a better view of off premise signs, which we already have a section that says you can't go cutting trees in our right of way. This specifies that you cannot cut them specifically to be able to show off your billboard. We had another staff change, just wording to match up with the way our design criteria manual reads. We call them qualified trees. So we changed required trees to qualified trees. We reiterated under the residential section that you have to retain at least one tree per lot. And which is, that's a pretty minimal requirement for residential. We hear a lot of builders complaining about other cities and how tough they are on their residential landscaping. So our one tree per yard is pretty safe. And then the other big change was we added a section for screening for dumpsters and recycling storage containers. Two of the items give us points for scenic city, saying that you're not going to put the opening directly up against a public sidewalk. And there's some spacing requirements for access. The other ones that we added basically are just common sense. We want them to be located to minimize their visibility from public streets. That cannot always be accomplished, but definitely where it can, we want that. And we need them screened, which we've already got that in our C O D requirements. That's everything in the zoning ordinance. Do we have comments or questions about that so far?
Do I have a motion to approve the changes? Or are we just going to discuss them tonight?
We need, if everybody's comfortable with moving forward with action. So the scenic city application period, our current certification is good for, it's five years. So our current one expires in 2019. So the application for scenic city begins June 1st to March 31st. So to get these changes in by March, when we go...
What we need to do is approve a recommendation to city council.
So tonight, if you approve it, we're just moving forward with joint public hearing. And then we'll make an official recommendation to city council and then to read into the order list to change. But we need a vote tonight to move forward. We have to advertise the organs change in the newspaper the week of January 14th in order to have a joint public hearing for February.
Okay. And we'll go through and ask for questions as part of discussion. Do we have a motion to approve these changes in the ordinance section?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, we went, the committee of Marcus and Dick and I went through it. And as we usually do, we tried to find fault in things Becky wrote and couldn't find anything. We picked at it quite a bit. And it's a complicated thing. You really need to look through the revised Word document here with track changes to really see what's changed. But I thought Becky described it quite well. And so, is there, there's no way to get it on the J P H for next meeting, is there? With the city council?
February 4th will be, or, no. It's already, because we have to do the newspaper notice. That would have had to been done in December for the January 14th.
14 days?
Has to be 16 days before the J P H.
But we're still on track if everything moves good to get on the, if we're on that J P H and then the city council, assuming we recommend it, get it back to city council before they adjourn and they approve it, then they have to have another one in March?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And then it becomes law and then you can claim it. Okay, so everything's tight, but doable.
Yes.
Correct. Our timeframe's a little, a little tight, but we can...
There's no room for slippage past this next, the next two city council meetings if we want to really make this happen.
Yes. Which, and we're going to recertify either way. And we are getting extra points from some other things the staff has been working on. But we do get a substantial jump from the changes to the ordinances. So it may just be a difference of what level we can reach depending on our timing.
I didn't see anything controversial or anything that would make you even blink on there. They all look like really good changes.
Dick, are Marcus, you want to change the review process?
No, I'd love to hear from you, Brett, but if there's anything from a developer's viewpoint that might disagree with what Lisa said.
No, as a developer, we don't like recreation, but these aren't too bad at all. And really, the one I thought I was going to bring up is on the trees. You have a minimum of two inch caliper. I thought it was three inch.
For mitigation trees.
Oh, it's three inch? Oh, okay.
Yeah. If you're having to replace existing trees.
I mean, three inch is kind of the standard. Going to three inch, would that give you up more points or...
No, sir.
Oh, it doesn't? Okay. I'm fine with everything. It's great.
Anyway, I didn't want to belabor anything, but, you know, we spent quite a bit of time going through these things. And it's just a very simple thing that we're trying to provide, I guess, a service to the Planning and Zoning Commission in reviewing this stuff ahead. The idea is that the city and the council in particular like to be scenic city highly qualified. And we're just trying to say, if you do these things, you'll be better off. That's really it. Change your name. Lisa.
I got it.
Marcus.
Nothing for me.
Okay, anything else on the subcommittee? So I guess I was just going to follow up, just, I think I heard it, but it really isn't anything here that you think is controversial. Radical change is different than other cities are doing, obviously. And some of this wording is right out of some of the recommendations in handbook for the scenic city.
Correct. We used, for the most part, their exact wording. There were a couple of items on the application that staff discussed. And we thought it would be either too onerous on developers or, you know, just not really something that fits with our city. So, I mean, there are more points hanging out there that are possible, but just don't fit with us. So all of these items, like I said, they're kind of what we called low hanging fruit. They're not hurting anybody. They're mostly common sense items that if we just put it in writing, then we get credit for it.
The only other thing I noted was the one remnant of a follow-up period.
Yes.
Did I mention that to you and you were going to take care of that?
Yes, which will, yeah, there was an extra follow-up period that I did not redline. So I've got that marked and we'll get that changed before we do notices.
I'll have a go back. On the one that says a park shall not have impervious cover exceeding 20% of the open space area. What does that mean?
That one is going to be on our next agenda item. That's in the subdivision ordinance.
Oh. Okay.
Would save that question? Yep, absolutely. Okay, so we do have a motion and a second. We've gone through discussion. Any, so all those in favor? Looks to be unanimous. Okay. Next is consideration and possible action regarding possible amendments. Possible amendments to Appendix B subdivision ordinance, Section 4 Parkland dedication additional requirements.
Yes, sir. So that was the last item. One of the requirements was that parks shall not have impervious cover, so, you know, concrete, things like that, exceeding 20% of the open space area. So you can't call it a park if 80% of it is concrete and you can't use it. We did talk to James Tony, the director of Parks and Recreation, and he didn't see any issue with it. We couldn't really come up with any scenarios where we would ever possibly reach more than 20% impervious cover. And that is an extra five points for us. So we did put that in the subdivision ordinance under our Parkland section.
So impervious cover is concrete?
Anything rain cannot get through, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm motion to approve.
And is there, is there a second?
A second, second, second.
I'll still second.
Oh, okay. Okay, discussion.
No, this is pretty simple. Just one thing I did want to say is that we're working on, Becky's working on a rewrite of the ordinances to kind of clean them up. And this gets us a little bit of the way there, but not very much. And there'll be more changes to those ordinances. They're just not as high priority or as short a timeframe to meet the scenic city. So it's still working. There'll be more ordinance modifications that'll go through a similar process. But those aren't, don't have the time issue associated with it.
I asked you questions. I got them all.
Marcus. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Again, looks to be unanimous. Okay. Next is consideration and possible action regarding future planning and zoning commission dates. Aubrey?
Yes, our next regular meeting would be Thursday, January 17th. And our regular meeting dates in February, just so you can mark your calendars, would be February 7th and 21st. And then we would be, with the scenic city stuff, we need, and I think we have actually two zone changes coming forward for February 4th. So we'll need to meet with council on Monday, the 4th. And we can consider at the next meeting whether or not to combine our, remove our meeting from the 7th to the 4th.
Do you anticipate stuff coming up on the 17th, this next meeting?
Um, yes.
Okay. Next on our agenda is communications. Before updating everyone on the status of our subcommittees, do any of the commissioners have anything they wish to communicate?
No, I attended the December 11th meeting for my liaison responsibilities, but nothing significant came from it. It was pretty light.
Haven't done anything. Been out of town.
Uh, there is an... Skip to Eric again. Gosh. I know. I'm going to look this way, anyway. Go ahead. I'm going to do this all night long.
Are we going to talk about the joint public hearing that the papers put out that's coming?
Dick? Should I call you Eric? I don't know.
We're going to switch chairs.
Yeah, I know, you're good. It's all me. It's all me. Okay. We'll move on to the ordinance subcommittee update.
So as Eric kind of led into, we talked about, and I don't know if we have it in the package anywhere. We could show it. There's a pros and cons list of, so we looked at, we were charged last time to look at what are the benefits and what are the shortcomings of having the J P H with city council. And we put together a list. And I'm going to have to read it to you here because I'm the only one...
So we actually need to put that on our next agenda as an official agenda item. You can mention that you've been working on it.
And I want to get your feel and make sure we're not missing something.
Yeah.
And so we kind of came up with a list of pros and cons. And I'll read to you what we found so far. And if we're missing something, I'm very interested to hear.
You want to say something, Aubrey?
Yeah, we can't discuss that tonight.
We can't?
Oh.
No.
Yeah, no, this...
It's not an official agenda item. So we just, you can just give an update that you've been talking about it, but we need to put it on the next agenda for further discussion.
What Aubrey said.
Well, that made it a lot easier, didn't it?
That's one of the items on the agenda for the 17th.
Some guy named Robert makes us not...
Who is that guy?
Open meeting. Okay. Well, Brett, I'll go to you on the planning subcommittee.
So we, I'm sorry, back up. So what we discussed, Richard was going to give an update on what the committee's been doing. That way, everybody knows to be looking at it, thinking about it. So on our next agenda, we can actually discuss it. Because the information, it's not going to make a whole lot of sense if you don't look at it with enough time ahead. So we have public hearing situations, Monday dates, and then there may or may not have been something else. But if you want to go ahead and give the update from the subcommittee, yes.
I'm not sure what I am allowed to speak about.
I'm confused as well.
It's just a briefing, nothing too detailed, basically, this is what we talked about.
As soon as I get too detailed, Mary Kay, you stop me. Because I'll tend to get into the data here. But we did talk about the pros and cons. We have a list of them. And we kind of discussed what it was. Our consensus kind of was we were supportive of separating them. We saw more benefits to having separate meetings than not. We'll show the specifics, I guess, next time because that would be getting into the details, which should not be discussed. I see nuts of not head nodding. So now I'm on the right side of the line. But it's something to be thinking about yourself if you have issues about it one way or the other. But we have been talking about it. I know it is something near and dear to Sally's heart and some of the city council people. Becky did an analysis of other cities to show that we are in a position that we would be consistent with other cities in the area. And so I'll stop talking now before I get back across that line. Very good.
The other item that the subcommittee had talked about was whether or not the commission wanted to move their meetings from Thursdays to Mondays. So think about your schedules, you know, how that affects you.
Those are two separate. Yes, sir.
No update on planning subcommittee because we have not met. So once we finalize the downtown district subcommittee, wrap that up, then I will kick off the planning subcommittee. I think it's Eric and Lisa. Correct, yes. Stay tuned.
Okay. So we've had, on the downtown district subcommittee, we've had three meetings so far. We have, we think, one more meeting. And gone through a lot of items, some of which were discussed a little bit tonight. And in subsequent meetings of the Planning and Zoning Commission, we will bring more information to bear. Zoning Commission, we will bring more information to bear, but you should be soon starting to see some of the recommendations and some of the changes that... How we're working together come forward. So, soon, more to come. City Council liaison is Sally Branson.
I just want to say that when I looked at this agenda, it felt like Christmas all over again, because everything that I'm excited about was on here. Chick-fil-A, woo-hoo! Robertson will be here permanently, woo-hoo! Downtown, I'm very excited about that, and I'm happy to hear what y'all are talking about in your different subcommittees. So, I just thank y'all for the hard work you're doing. I mean, I'm looking at this. I was in your chair once upon a time, and you got three or four meetings a week, and don't tell council, but P&amp;Z works harder than council. But I just want to thank y'all very much for what you're doing, and I'm really, really excited. So, thank you, keep up the great work.
Aubrey, anything?
I don't have anything.
I'm gonna echo something what Sally said. I meant to mention it earlier as well. I mean, there's been lots of subcommittee meetings through the holidays, and this was a long, lengthy agenda this evening, so thanks, everybody, for going through it and keeping up. There's a lot of work being done, and we're making real progress, so thank you. With that, we are adjourned.